I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for August 4th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commissioner members present.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Banky and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now it is time for public gar- I can't talk, sorry. Public comment regarding items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. This is for only four items that are on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment within the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We'll begin now. We will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we will move on to proclamations. And I'm going to ask Alliance Center for Workforce Development to come on up here. And I'm going to grab a microphone and I'll meet you over there. You can come right up here, Ron. You can stand right here if you want, or either side. I'll switch with you. How's that? All right. Do you want to introduce yourself and say a little bit about Alliance? Yes?
I'm Ron Griffith, the interim executive director for the Alliance Center for Workforce Development. And we are located on East Church Street. So very proud and honored to be another attribute to the city of Adrian. This beautiful city that is so vibrant and moving forward very, very expeditiously. We are blessed and honored to be a part of the historic east side of Adrian. Thank you for your support. Thank all of you for your support. Greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
So they had their ribbon cutting at the end of June, but we are just giving them their proclamation right now. Ron and I were working on it. And then it was right during bicentennial time. And he said, let's wait until all of that is done. So here we are. Yes. Whereas the Alliance Center for Workforce Development was founded to connect education and employment in Lenaway County. And whereas the partnership between the Alliance Center and community stakeholders highlights the value of public-private partnerships. And whereas the new home for the Alliance Center, located at the former Restore World Church on Adrian's historic east side, will house training classrooms, shared spaces, and consulting services. And whereas the founders of the Alliance Center saw a need in our community and answered that need with a vision and action, providing space for employers, educational institutions, and world-class training organizations to collaborate and develop the Lenaway County workforce by meeting the needs of employers. Now therefore I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby congratulate the Alliance Center for Workforce Development on their grand opening and look forward to seeing the positive impact this organization will have on the Adrian community. And you have already graduated some, at least a class from a flooring certification, because I actually saw that online. So if you want to, you can maybe say what you offer there?
That's on our satellite campus. And we started the satellite campus only because we were in the renovation of the Church Street location. And there was a tremendous need for flooring, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. So we started with flooring. We worked with the National Flooring Association out of Georgia. They were very generous and probably, I'll defer to my colleague, was it about $50,000 worth of equipment? They provided to us, my colleague Franco Van Nord, our business manager. And then they provided $2,500 scholarships for the students that came through the program. And then the balance of that was taken care of by a sector grant we had. So those students who went through that program, 11 of them, didn't have to have any out-of-pocket money. They were the first official graduating class from the Alliance Center for Workforce Development and recognized nationally by the National Flooring Foundation and the National Flooring Association. So each one of those young men and one woman now have certification numbers that they can go out and find jobs. They don't have to go out and find jobs because they all found jobs before they were even done. So, and then in the interim, we began looking at programs that we can begin to offer later this summer and fall. Because now that we're in the building, and by the way, you all are welcome to come over to 440 East Church Street. Doug has been there. Major has been there. And it's been an absolute delight. Mayor has been there. We would love to show you around what we have going on over there. We anticipate doing things for human resources, for the One Truth Shop company, that they can't get away to take human resource courses, accounting for non-accountings, artificial intelligence. Help me out, Franco, what other kind of programs? Yes. IT, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're excited. And we're not busting at the seams yet, but yesterday we were just having a conversation of, we're running out of space. We've only been there for two months. So thank you again so much for the opportunity to address each and every one of you. Thank you for your support. And you are welcome anytime to come over and visit us.
Could, could he also put a plug in for his event coming up on Sunday, the 17th, the Back to School Bash, too?
This will be our second annual Back to School Bash, where we invite parents, caretakers, guardians, to bring out their young people who are going back to school anywhere from pre-K through 12th grade. Last year, we anticipated about 150 people. We ended up having 450 people. And it was absolutely wonderful. It's August 7th over at our facility. You're welcome to come out. We have food trucks, my favorite part. We have a bouncy house for those of you who are daring enough to go on the bouncy house. And then we have all kinds of other displays. And we showcase what the Alliance Center is all about. So thank you for reminding me of that. But that's our second annual, so stop over. Thanks so much. Thank you again, Mayor.
We will now move on to our informational discussion topics. And first up is an educational discussion tonight that will be presented by our city engineer, Matt Tomaszewski, for chip and fog seal. You are going to learn all about chip and fog seal on your roads tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Very exciting stuff, I know. So good evening. My name is Matt Tomaszewski. I am the director of Parks, well, not Parks anymore, Engineering Services. I was asked to come here today to discuss the process of chip and fog seal. It is a preventative maintenance measure that we use each year to preserve what we have. So to get into it, chip and fog seal is a process that is initially laying down all the binder on the road to seal all the cracks. And then we add a layer of chip to it. And then on top of that, we put another layer of emulsion in order to bind everything together. This in turn seals all the cracks, provides a new wearing surface, and then it's painted black to look like a new road. It does have some cons to it as well, as far as the dust control. But after we were able to put the new coat of fog seal on top, the dust goes away and it looks like a brand-new wearing surface. So this technique is projected to last about five to seven years. In some cases, we've seen it last more than seven years. And it is very cost-effective. So the way I like to explain this process is think of it as your house. So our road is the house. The base is our assets inside the house. So your asphalt surface can be thought of as your roof. So when you get a roof leak in your house, you don't go down and tear your whole house apart. You don't tear everything apart on your roof. You go through and find a cost-effective technique to fix the solution. So what we try to do is seal all the cracks by what in this case would be re-roofing your roof, just putting a new layer of shingles on top of it. So in this process, we're sealing all the cracks, making it safe, protecting all the assets inside, and then preserving what roof you have left underneath. So when your roof starts to leak, you don't replace everything inside, correct? So again, we're just, we're taking care of the issue at hand, which is just the surface leaks. The base underneath is what is the most expensive part of the roadway. So our goal is to protect that at all cost. And then, so why do we use it? We use it as a proactive measure instead of a reactive measure. Again, we're trying to preserve the road and the base as best as we can. This process is less disruptive to our residents. It's very cost-effective. And again, we're trying to focus on the preservation. This process usually lasts about three to four weeks. Heavy reconstruction usually lasts up to six months. So this is definitely a lot better for our residents. You might not get the smooth, completely smooth surface as new asphalt, but we're protecting that base underneath and saving money in the long run. And then to give you some perspective for how much it costs, we have 73 miles of streets to maintain. And per mile, chip and fog costs about 31,000, just under 32,000. To reconstruct a mile of road is about 2.5 million. So when you have 70, almost 74 miles of street to maintain, every dollar goes the distance. So we are trying to use, to maximize our funding in order to preserve what we have and make it last as long as we can. So when we first started Chip and Fog, it was really back in about 2016. We brought it back into the city of Adrian. It was done years and years ago, but it was not favorable. We actually had all the equipment on hand. And we ended up selling it because it was not favorable. We brought it back in 2016 because we had financial issues. We were trying to look at our roads differently. So looking in the top left in 2018, the red there is our roads that were rated poor. With the focus on preserving first, rather than fixing the worst-conditioned roads first, we've gotten all the way up to, well, from 75% poor to last year's was 29% poor. So we are, our road quality is getting much better over the years. And that's all because we're focusing on preservation first and not the worst condition first. That's all I have.
How long, how much longer, how long does it extend the life of that road?
So it'll extend the life five to seven years. We, the first time we did this was in 2016 on Riverside Ave and Sand Creek Ave. And we've seen quite phenomenal results, which that was nine years ago, nine years ago now. So and it's, we're, it's up for another chip and fog in either next year or the following year. So it's actually lasted us 10 to 11 years.
And you can do it more than once?
We can do it more than once. Actually, if your street is really far alligatored, it can be done as a double chip seal right off the bat. And it will help preserve it a little bit more. But we haven't tested that theory yet.
What do you think the average saving is over the years? How much are we saving by now?
That's a very good question. Well, I would say we just chipped and fogged Beecher Street this year from Maine to the city limits. And that cost us roughly 150,000. And that was over a mile and a half long. We just reconstructed Church Street last year, which was a mile long, and that cost us 2.5 million. So in the theory of maintaining what you have first, we will not have to touch Beecher Street for another, another at least five to seven years. The hope is to continue that on Church Street. In probably 10 to 15 years, we'll hit it with a chip and fog. And we won't have to spend the, oh, I can't go back anymore. We won't have to spend the 564,000 per mile to replace that. We'll be spending 150,000. So I would say you're saving 400,000 every couple of years.
How do you decide when it's had enough chip and fog and you've actually got to reconstruct? How do you make that decision?
So like I mentioned, our whole goal is to preserve the base, the assets underneath. And that, once we start getting so far deteriorated on our surface level and there's no surface left and we're just filled with potholes, that water has created so much disturbance in our base that we need to repair that base underneath. So once we get to that point, we'll take a soil bore of our street, which is a boring that goes three feet down in the street, determines what base we have left, how thick the asphalt is, where our subbase is. And we'll pull that up and pretty much dissect it and see what we need to do next. And if it comes back that we have some decent base left, then we'll just do a milling resurface at that point. If there's no base left, then we'll have to do a reconstruct. There's another process that we've started recently called the Base Stabilize, which also brings about the same amount of life into the street as a reconstruct. And it's about half the cost. So we are working, using that measure a lot more often, too.
Question, a couple of questions. So my neighbor's a quality assurance engineer and has spent hours in my backyard discussing the resurfacing with me. So he indicates that there's no quality assurance plan that we have here. So essentially, what we have with the bid documents is that we say, we want you to apply the chip and fog seal. And so here's the street. And when we have the street, there's no way to check in terms of the quality of the work because there's no check and balance with that. Because we don't deliver the street in a certain condition. They get it in every condition possible. And then as a result of that, when they turn it back over to us, if there's still gaps in the road, like was in my neighborhood, following the chip and fog seal and grass growing through after the chip and fog seal, that how, how do we make sure that doesn't happen? Or the difference, as he indicated, and as he drove all the construction sites that took place last year, that the quality that he observed in one neighborhood is different than another neighborhood?
Sure. So yeah, they, first off, they do get it at any quality. We've done this on a street quality of one, up to a seven at this point. The street quality of one is very well-alligatored, grass going through. The worst street you can possibly imagine right now. Up to a seven, which was probably paved a couple of years ago. So they've seen every side of the street. Every street is going to be different in its own way. In order to match the quality on every surface, it's impossible. But we look at it after the product is done. In your subdivision, we went through after the road was sealed over. And like you said, there were still cracks open. So we came through and sealed those cracks off shut. The seal, the crack seal isn't going to seal every crack there is. I mean, it's, it's a, it's very fluid. So it's going to try and fill as much of the crack as it can. But the hope is that the second layer of fog seal will seal over that. Some of that stone might get shoved in those cracks. And that next layer of stone will be, the next layer of emulsion will be enough to cover everything and hold it tight. Grass is resilient. Cracks collect dirt and dust and everything else. Weeds are going to grow. There's not much that we can do unless it's a full asphalt replacement in order to get your, your grass out of the road. We're trying to seal it as much as we can, keep the dust and dirt out of there. And that's why we're trying to be more proactive about it, rather than reactive. We're in a state of trying to catch up at this point. And we're trying to get past that catch-up point and try and get it before the cracks start surfacing.
Is there any advantage of filling those, because there are some pretty massive cracks, before?
Yeah. So we've tried that in years past. Some of it seemed to have advantages. Others didn't seem, it actually created more of a disadvantage for us. So Sienna Heights was done, I think about four years ago. And we crack sealed that street first. When the chip and fogging crew came through, their equipment actually tore it all up because it's all sticky. So everything's sticking to all the equipment. So it tore all the crack seal up that we just put down and then put it in spots that it wasn't necessary. And then we had to mill off those spots to create a better, smoother surface. So in talking with the professionals that do this daily, we asked them, what's the best? And they said, either you, you crack seal it to use in advance, so your stickiness is not a question, or you don't do it at all and let the sealant fill it in. So that's the route we're taking right now, is trying to let the sealant fill it in and take a look at it.
So this spring, some neighbors again had concerns about all the loose stone and gravel that was there for kids riding their bikes and things like that in the neighborhood. And the city came through with their street sweeper. Is that part of standard protocol? Does that help things? How does that work with the bigger picture of the projects?
Yeah. So once the chip is down, they put enough down to provide a, even a wearing surface across. You don't want to put not enough down. You want to fill all those voids. And so you want to pack it all down. That's why we leave it open for traffic for a couple of weeks to get it all packed in. The whole goal is to get some of that loose stone out. That way, it's just going to fall out eventually. But if you have a flat wearing surface and some of the loose stone is kicked out to the side, we'll come through and pick it up with a street sweeper just to get it off the road. But the whole goal is to pack it down as much as you can before we go through and put that layer of fog seal on top of it.
Thank you.
Matt, over time, it seems like everybody has a concern about a particular pothole somewhere in their neighborhood, maybe in front of their house. What's the best way for them to report that to the city to get its attention?
So you can reach out to anyone at the engineering department or public works department. Tammy maintains the phone lines at Public Works. She can be reached at 264-4888. My number is at the end here, and it's 264-4829. Either way, you can report a pothole that way and we will get it taken care of. We are out, when construction's not going on, we're out probably weekly filling potholes and with cold patch or we'll put it on for a hot patch.
Now I know the answer to tell people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do well-traveled roads get smoother quicker, though? Because I feel like I've noticed that. And like, because I even have neighbors complaining because you did my neighborhood this year. And it is very bumpy and it's hard for the kids riding bikes. But I've noticed that roads that were just done maybe like a year or two ago, but they're very well-traveled. They seem smooth, just like we had asphalted them.
Yeah. So one, one good thing about this is it's less disturbance. It's, it's a problem for about two, three weeks. And then after people start utilizing it more, the surface will get smoother. It's just small little chipstone and stone will degrade over time. So it will get smoother over time. I know it's not fun for kids to play on the street, but it's not also safe either. So I know we have a lot of complaints of, well, my kid can't play on the street anymore. So it's unfortunate, but we're trying to look at it as a financial savings for us.
We are not alone in using this process and the research that I've done of many other states. The state of Minnesota Department of Transportation, Washtenaw County uses it. I think Lenaway County has started using it.
Yes. We, we are not, we're not the only ones. We are actually, I think, some of the ones that are, I wouldn't say the forefront, because I went to a conference and learned about this about 10 years ago. And there was Kalamazoo County, who was pretty much the leader in this. They actually have won awards for how good their roads have been over the last couple of years. So we kind of latched onto that and seen what they were doing, realized that Lenaway County uses this every year. It's something that we've tried to partner with them on as far as quality assurance. But they are so busy doing their own work that they can't help with us. So we are, we are trying to be the leader in this, quite honestly. I want to see those, those green numbers go up to 80%, quite honestly. And I think we can get there if we continue to preserve our roads first. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Presentation, but it works.
Are there any other items? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion, a motion from Commissioner Roberts and a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Castleberry.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
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 Special orders under a regular agenda. Special Order Gas. It's a public hearing.
To hear and consider comments regarding a proposed franchise agreement with Citizens Gas. I now call this public hearing to order. We will begin inside the city chambers. And then if anybody wants to comment as well on Zoom, you will have the opportunity to do it as well. As with any public hearing, just the same as public comment, please state your name and place of residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager Emmerich and Commissioners. My name is Molly Lumpert Coy, and I'm a regional manager for DTE Energy, but I'm here to represent Citizens Gas this evening. And I wanted to share a little bit about our natural gas that helps cook your meals, warm your home, and handle many of your essential needs in your life here in Adrian. Citizens Gas is proud to call Adrian home for 169 years. And many of our team members work right here and live right here in the community. You may see us down the street at the local store or volunteering for various events in the community where your neighbors were right here to improve your life and your energy. Many of our employers, many of our employees serve on charitable boards all throughout the community. Myself, previously, I've been chair of the Monroe-Lenaway United Way. Joseph Lucci is right over here. He's current treasurer of the United Way. Bert has served on many different charitable boards locally in the community. We have about 38 employees that live in the city and work and contribute. Some of those areas of support that we as a corporation look at, certainly charitable boards and volunteerism, United Way, Boys and Girls Club, Lenaway Symphony, Junior Achievement of Michigan, Lenaway County Education Foundation. We provide shelter discounts on gas sales. Lenaway Economic Development Corporation, assistance to the City of Adrian's economic development, Croswell Opera House, Hope Center, Lenaway Chamber of Commerce, and certainly the Adrian Holiday Festivities. We've been a strong supporter for many years. Investment-wise, we do a lot of investment locally, almost a million dollars this year. Over the next five years, we'll be looking at another $4 million as we continue to invest in our infrastructure. But we believe we are a good partner. We have some of the lowest rates in Michigan and in the Midwest. We just want to continue to operate and provide that energy for the city. And so we hope that you'll kindly consider this franchise, which allows the general public to vote and to have their vote be heard. So thank you so much for your time.
Hello, Joe Lucy. I'm the county manager for Citizens Gas. I live in Adrian Township. I grew up in Adrian, Michigan, lived in the area all my life. Just a couple of things. I know Molly had mentioned these. 34 employees, 85% live in our distribution territory. Uh, 34 employees, 85% live in our, in our distribution territory. So they're, um, vested in what they're, what they're putting in the ground and maintaining. All your phone calls are, are answered locally here at our main street office. So you're going to talk to someone that lives in the community when you're, when you're talking to, to check on your rates or to plan something. As far as scheduling, uh, if you need a new gas service or repair gas service, uh, you're going to talk to probably one person and that person's going to handle everything. And in most, the longest case would be, if you're ready right now, the longest case would be three weeks. So you just have that personal care and it's, and it's easy to schedule when you have such a small organization. Meter appointments can be done within the day sometimes. Sometimes it may take up to three days for us to get out there. But again, you, you're, you're going to be talking to someone that's right here in your community that's local and there. And then, um, we have a high, uh, retention rate amongst our employees. So our employees start out kind of at the remedial jobs and work their way up. Our most senior employees are the ones that they're going to go out and they're going to inspect the lines. They're going to look for leaks before they happen. And we have a certain sequence of events that we have to do to maintain, um, the safety code, which is done through the state of Michigan. And then, um, uh, our distribution rate and customer fees are approved locally through the City of Adrian, uh, through the Gas Commission. And, uh, and what you're doing is you're only paying for what's locally done. Where if you were with a big utility, you know, they go to Lansing and they're trying to take what's going on to Detroit and Grand Rapids and the U P and they're trying to put all that together. And you're getting a blended rate here. You're getting a rate that's just for the local community for us to maintain and improve your system. So, thank you for your time.
Any extra agendas?
Bert Pruchy, General Manager of Citizens Gas. I had a whole list of things I was going to talk about, but Joe and Molly pretty much stole most of my thunder. Uh, I will say that we have invested quite a bit in local street projects. Uh, Church Street, we replaced all the services when you did reconstruction of the street. Elm Street, we're getting, we already replaced the services on that, getting ready for the reconstruction of that street. And I think it was last year you did Cumsy Street, replaced main and services at the, before you guys went in and reconstructed the street. We do have a big project, uh, multimillion dollar project, putting a new eight inch steel, high pressure main on the north side of, uh, Adrian, actually to be in Adrian Township. And also be building two new regulator stations. So that will help the reliability of our service. Um, our district regulator stations that we have in the system, every one of them has been rebuilt or remodified with new equipment. So they're all more modernized than what they were 15 years ago. Any questions? Thank you.
We will open up the public hearing to the Zoom participants. Hearing, no more public comment. I call this public hearing closed. Moves, moving on to our resolutions.
Oh, we were already done with our in comment on the, this is for, this is for a special order. Yeah, we're not in regular public comment yet.
Moving on to resolutions, resolution R 25 dash zero 49 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve the purchase of property at 227 North Winter Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Are there any Commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution R 25 dash zero 50, it is from administration. It is a resolution to approve ballot language for a proposed franchise agreement with Citizens Gas. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Are there any Commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Can we just briefly go over the rules for this on the ballot proposal about who's paying for it? All those types of things.
Well, there is no cost because it's a general election. So we're already running an election, so there's no cost. Um, the Michigan Constitution requires a vote of 60% of the citizens of the City of Adrian to approve the franchise. Now the franchise is for 30 years. Um, and basically what a franchise does, can everybody hear me? I know I'm staring at Matt, but, um, what a franchise does is basically give Citizens Gas access to the road right of way. So it allows them to use city property to deliver services to our citizens.
What would happen if, uh, there was not a franchise agreement?
Well, you can do a franchise agreement without a vote, but it would be.
Without, without a public vote.
Correct, correct. I apologize from the citizens, yes. So the City of Adrian could grant a, a franchise to any utility. However, it would be revocable, which means you could change it at any time. And, and of course, when a franchise is granted, the company is, is putting a lot of money into the city. So, you know, all these gas lines, we don't pay for the oil. I guess you do pay for it through, through their rates, but they own that. And the franchise allows them to put them in.
And if, um, that, so is the franchise agreement, um, a monopoly agreement? That says it's only one, uh, gas provider?
No.
So other gas providers could?
Absolutely. So a franchise does not mean exclusivity.
Okay.
It is not exclusive, but it would be very difficult to have multiple gas companies because they would all have to own their own gas lines. So that's why the partnership is important with whoever the city is going to use as a franchise. That's kind of what they were just talking about and, you know, what they provide back. That's why it is that way. But it's not in any way exclusive. That's in our ordinance.
So just to reiterate, what we are voting on, and I want to make sure everyone in the public knows, is to put it on the ballot for the residents of Adrian to vote. So we are not saying yes. We are saying yes to the ballot language. That's all we're saying. And then it will be up to the residents to decide if this is what, um, they would like citizens to continue in the City of Adrian.
And did it pass 30 years ago?
By 53%.
No. Actually it passed by, I think it was 87% in favor of Citizens Gas.
What my records show, I'm not disputing that. I'm saying it was 53%. So if it doesn't pass, you can still grant a franchise because the franchise, once again, is how it's delivered.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to public comment, this is general public comment. It doesn't have to be anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. We will start inside the city chambers first. And just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Hello, Aaron Trescher, City of Adrian resident. Um, I've come to touch base on a request I emailed the commission a few weeks ago. And we have come to speak about the human cost of immigration detention. Specifically, the continued detention of one of our community members who has already paid bond and done everything asked of him by the system. Whether, uh, through fear, anxiety, grief, exhaustion, or the weight of watching a neighbor or loved one suffer, um, the community has felt this shockwave. We want to be clear, we understand that immigration policy, it doesn't live at this table, but leadership does. Representation does. And in moments like these, silence is not neutrality, it's permission. Commissioners are elected not just to vote on budgets or pass ordinances, but to speak. You've written letters before for funding, for recognition, for support. We're asking you now to do the same thing for someone's freedom and for the health and wellbeing of the community. Writing a letter to a judge isn't going beyond your role. It is part of your role. You represent the people who are being harmed by this. Your voice has weight and your silence has consequences. Tonight we'll be sharing different, uh, different impacts this detention has had on Adrian. Emotional, mental, psychological and spiritual. We ask you to listen to each speaker as they show you the different, uh, a different piece of the whole. And we ask sincerely to use your position to help and write the letter. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allie Quinn here in Adrian. I want to speak to the pain that's been visible in Adrian since this detention happened. This man wasn't taken. His absence just left a wound that has not stopped bleeding. Families are grieving like someone died. Children are asking questions no adult should have to answer. Neighbors are living in fear, unsure if they or their loved ones will be next. This isn't just one man's crisis, it's all of ours. And when trauma doesn't stay contained, it ripples into our schools, our churches, our workplaces, our homes. It shakes the foundation of who we say we are as a community. That's why I'm here tonight asking you to write a letter, not just for him, but for us, for Adrian. When our residents come to this podium shaking, crying, scared, it's because they believe in the power of local leadership. They come here because they trust you more than any federal agency. But when someone pays bond and is still denied freedom because of a memo, that trust gets shattered. And that's not how justice should work. You have the opportunity now to help restore that trust, not with slogans or silence, but with a letter that tells the truth. A letter that says, we saw what happened and it matters. Because silence in the face of injustice is never neutral, it's complicity. And your voice tonight can make all the difference. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nora Bader and I live here in Adrian. Since this detention's happened, I've noticed a cloud of fear hanging over the community. I've seen people too afraid to answer their door or people in Walmart turning their heads because they get caught speaking a foreign language and they don't know what someone could be assuming. Children having to ask heartbreaking questions that people don't even have proper answers to. The fear is real and it's constant and it's growing day by day. Because this man, the one who was taken, isn't a stranger. He was a father-to-be, a parent, a provider. His girlfriend's due with their first child in October, but instead of preparing for that new life, she's now left to navigate grief, bills and fear alone. His detention hasn't just disrupted one household, it's destabilized an entire section of our city. Families are suffering, schools feel the ripple effect, coworkers are shaken and the loss of one steady hand has thrown many lives into chaos. And what makes it harder to accept is that he did what he was supposed to do. He met the legal conditions for release and paid bond. They should, it should have meant something. But a memo is overridden that process and now despite following the rules, he's still behind bars. That's not justice, that's punishment without due process. And when people do everything right and are still denied freedom, it sends a message that the system is rigged against them, that their lives, their families and their futures don't matter. You may not be federal officials, but you are leaders and your words do carry weight. A letter from this commission won't erase what happened, but it would mean something. And it would show his child, soon to be born, that this city cared. It would show that our neighbors still deserve due process and that fairness still lives here. The silence is not the only option. Please write the letter for him, for his family and for the people of Adrian who are watching, waiting and hoping that someone will choose courage. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evelyn, I'm 16 and I live here in Adrian. I've spent my summer fighting fascism and standing in front of adults, begging for leadership. While most kids were planning parties, I spent my sweet 16 at a protest because I couldn't celebrate while people in my community are living in fear. I'm speaking tonight not because I know all the laws or politics, but because I know what fear feels like and I know that I'm not the only one feeling it. Since this man was detained, the entire community has been filled with fear, anxiety and sadness. You can feel it everywhere, in grocery stores, at the gas station, in people's voices and body language. Everyone is on edge. Parents are scared, kids are scared and no one knows what will happen next. Sorry. The other morning, on my walk, I smiled at a Hispanic man passing by. I watched the fear flash across his face as he quickly dropped his gaze. That moment stayed with me because no one should feel unsafe just walking through their own city or by their church. This isn't just about one person. It's about what his absence is doing to everyone around him, his family, his partners, his unborn child, his neighbors, his coworkers. Every day he stays behind bars, it causes more pain, more fear and more damage. This moment isn't about politics, it's about humanity. A person who belongs in the city, who worked here, lived here and helped build this community is sitting behind bars when he shouldn't be. And what's worse is he followed the rules. He paid bond, he met the conditions for release, but now he is still locked up because of a memo. That's not how justice is supposed to work. No one is asking you to break the law or go against the courts. We are just asking you to speak, to say as local leaders that what is happening is wrong, that Adrian doesn't quietly accept injustice. If you believe this detention is causing harm, and I know many of you do, then say it. Not with a slogan, not in a headline, but in a letter, in your own words for the people you represent, for what's right. If you truly care about this community, especially its young people, then prove it because actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you Commissioners, Julie Youngworth, Adrian. I just wanted to catch up on all of the, um, planning and zoning issues, especially the, uh, new and updated and I think chain, chain, changing zoning ordinances. I came to the open house, the first open house. And I also did get the whole report from Jeremiah, very nice, very accommodating. And, um, I'm still confused. Um, I know that there's a meeting tomorrow with the zoning board. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that, um, it's to go over the new, uh, zoning again, or I'm confused. I, I've, believe me, I've looked through the whole thing that I got. This is the, the whole zoning board information. And I did come to the meeting and I still don't get it. Uh, there's got to be another way. I know I'm not real dim, but there's got to be another way to have the information more clear to the residents. I think a lot of people probably don't really want to get involved or want to know it or really care. But a lot of the, the zoning in the city does affect me where I live and I know it affects a lot of people. And I won't get into the specifics of the exact issues that I'm, uh, wanting to know more about. But there's got to be another way, I think, and like I said before, please correct me if I'm wrong. If you can respond, tomorrow's meeting is the zoning board just going over all of the new and changed zoning? Again, it's not making, it's not making a decision. And also, if the decision by the city commission is made, when is it going to be made? All of these things, I, I keep checking the, the website. I keep checking, you know, see what, try and find out what's going on with the media and. All of these things, I keep checking the website, I keep checking, you know, try and find out what's going on with the media and all that, but I just don't get any more information or answers. And I think the open house was a great thing, I think maybe you should have more open houses and be more specific with questions that should have answers, clearer answers. But everybody was really accommodating from the city that was there and the zoning board, I'm not complaining about them at all. It's just that, it's just so, you know, come on, I want to know and I want to know what's going on or coming up or changing. And I'm still not, you know, I read it, I made my notes, thank you.
Hi, Judith Hammerly, I live in the city of Adrian. I do want to talk about this issue of trauma and the person who you're being asked to write a letter for, but do it in a broader sense than just for this one person. It's for the other city, other people in the city too. I want you to think in your mind, we were told that the people who were going to be arrested were criminals. Rapists, pedophiles, murderers, and they were the people who were going to be arrested. Now think in your mind, what percentage of the people who've been detained by ICE are, fall in the category of having any of those convictions? It's about 30%. The rest of them, over 70%, don't have any criminal background, no adjudications on them. So what does this do to the community? And I mean me too, not just people who are in that group that is being looked at. About the rule of law, about what the government is saying, about your protection of the people, because you did get elected, who live in the community. We don't know when someone else is going to be in that group. Or just if we're empathic people, for the people who are in that group, what the effect is going to be. People are going to report fewer crimes. People are not going to talk as much to any kind of official for fear that they might be in that 70% too. Writing a letter supports this one person, but it also supports the community. Thank you. Gail Dunaway, just came from Elm Street, which is a lovely mess right now. Anxiously waiting for it to be completed. Couple of guys in a hole, been in a hole all afternoon in front of the Dillard's house. But anyways, they're working on getting the lid out. I have a suggestion, a comment, says all this effort, money is going to this project that you need to do some serious tree thinning. Matt knows the situation in front of my house, it's practically a trough. Because somebody thought that a linden tree would be a good idea. Yes, they do provide a lot of shade, but the street never dries and I'm on the west side of the street. So when the sun sets and you think you're going to get all that afternoon sun, no. So, you know, along comes the big garbage trucks, some weeks, twice a week, and then other trucks and whatnot. It's a trough, we're getting close to bedrock. So think about having someone do some serious trimming on the street side. I'm taking care of my side for a good chunk of change. Thank you.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants.
Ben Mormon, City of Adrian resident. I just wanted to thank you all. Sorry, thank you ma'am. I just wanted to thank you all for believing in the seriousness of this attack on our neighbors and the dedicated efforts that you are putting in to help the situation. I really encourage you to stand behind us and write these letters of support. But also, I think that it would be very pertinent to provide what we are doing, how we were said last meeting, that the city is, I think, by the same kind of standard of protections as Lansing. If we could maybe put that as a reiteration in writing so that all of our citizens and wealthy Washingtonans would be able to feel that we are, like they can see what is actually the purposes of the law that was set aside to make sure that they are safe. They can understand that there's trust that is already there. So I just wanted to write that. I am the one who, along with Erin, goes up to Baldwin. We have seen this young man, he is very strong for going through what he is. But it is an atrocious situation that we are more than happy to detail further than any of you. But if any one of us are able to be able to be sent to these sorts of things, especially now with the criminalization of homelessness and mental illness, it's really a question of who is next, because it's not, yeah, it's going to. So I really appreciate it and hope that that is a thing that we can all collaborate on.
My name is Jessica Harrison, I live in Tecumseh. I want to share just a couple quotes that came to mind when hearing everybody speak today. One is from the ACLU. Public employees are often the ones with the most relevant expertise and intimate knowledge of how government works and can bring a unique perspective to public debate about critical issues. It is essential that courts continue to robustly protect public employees' ability to speak out. Not only because they do not surrender their First Amendment rights when they take on government employment, but also because the public needs to hear their voices. Another one from Eleanor Roosevelt. Where after all do human rights begin? In small places, close to home, so close and so small that they cannot be seen on any maps of the world. Unless these rights have meaning there, they have little meaning everywhere. And my final one that I was going to share is from John F. Kennedy. The rights of every man are diminished when the rights of one man are threatened. We need you to speak up more about what is going on. I know that you guys are doing it behind closed doors, you've spoke about and that you, you know, are speaking, you know, directly to constituents, but this idea of the letter, I think, is really important. And some more information to the public, I think, would be really helpful. With school just going around, you know, getting ready to start just around the corner, I think a lot of families are fearing what may happen in our schools. When we have all of these, you know, all of our community members, you know, coming to one place every day. So I just hope that you guys do the right thing.
Hearing no more public comment. Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet, are there any questions or comments on those? So now we're moving on to the Administrator Position Applicant Discussion and Amy Sal will, from Yon-Yon, will be taking over on this.
Thank you very much. We had a tremendous response of applicants for the position of City Administrator. Twelve candidates have been presented. Five of those candidates, or I should say, seven of the candidates did request confidentiality. And so pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, it is appropriate to be able to go into closed session to speak of those applicants and to review the contents of their applicants. For the five candidates that did not request confidentiality, I would like to list their corresponding number and request feedback in the show of support to move those candidates forward, for those five candidates. The first candidate is number four. I would like to understand who would like to move forward and interview candidate number four. By show of hands?
I was going to say, how are we doing this?
Yeah, are you wanting, yeah, are you wanting a show of hands or feedback or like?
First, show of hands.
I have a question first. I know it's kind of up to us to make a decision on, like, what do you suggest is a cutoff? Like, I ranked mine, and so do we do one through 12? Do we do just top three? What is the suggestion?
So my end result would be a recommendation of moving forward with three to five candidates. And typically, gathering feedback, there's either strong support, so that maybe, you know, 70 to 80% of the people want to move forward with a candidate. There's often usually a 0 to 10% desire to move forward. So usually it's pretty clear that there's strong support to move forward and interview a candidate, or there's not much support. And then the discussion can be held around people that are in the middle. So for instance, if there's unanimous support for five candidates, I would recommend moving forward with those five. So that's where getting feedback initially, kind of through an initial assessment, is very helpful in determining next steps. Because this is a decision to decide who we're going to bring forward in the candidates, we're not making a decision on who. All that conversation will be held in open forum with lots of public conversation. It's really just to decide who we want to move forward with. And so getting that initial assessment is helpful. However, I also want people, you all, to feel comfortable that if you have a top candidate and even if nobody else seems to voice support, I would still want that person included. I want you all to feel that the candidates that you feel are worthy of consideration, get the opportunity to interview publicly and get to meet the community. So we can do more than, we can do all 12, or we can make some decisions now and move forward with a more limited group.
Thank you for that explanation.
So my suggestion would be to get initial feedback on the five that have not requested confidentiality and then go into the closed session to discuss the other seven.
Okay.
So by voice or hand, are there any commissioners interested in moving forward candidate number four? Okay, I see none. By voice or hands, are commissioners interested in moving forward candidate number five? One, two, three, four, five, seven. By show of hands or voice, candidate number seven. Zero. Candidate number nine. One, two, three, four.
I was not sure on that one. I marked some of mine a definite yes, some of them a no, and that was one of my gray ones.
Okay, 4.5, thank you. Candidate number 12. Okay, one. All right, thank you. I think it's very helpful and now I'd like to go into a closed session.
I'd like to motion to go into a closed session to discuss the confidential candidates.
Support.
Commissioner Banky, were you the support, sorry?
Yeah.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Banky to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gouse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We will come back out here after we have voted to come out of closed session and we'll finish out the meeting out here.
I just don't understand the confidentiality. Nobody knows they're not. Why's it gotta be so damn confidential?
Michelle, is it recording yet?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I didn't know. All right, we are going to continue with Yonio on our city administrator search discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm gonna go through the candidates that did request confidentiality to get feedback from each commissioner about moving them forward. Candidate number one. Candidate number two. Candidate number three. Candidate number six. Candidate number seven. Candidate number eight. Candidate number 10. Candidate number 11. Thank you. So based on this input, there are five candidates that have received strong support for interviews.
Can you give us those numbers?
Yes.
Just to make sure, thank you.
Sure. Candidate number two. Candidate number five. Candidate number nine. 10 and 11.
Am I correct that there are four candidates that received unanimous support of the commission and one received mixed?
Correct.
Yes, my initial take is that we bring forth those four that received unanimous.
Candidate number nine got like a four and a half, so.
I would like to bring five, just. I think it gives us a broader scope to learn and understand what, you know, I think you learn interviewing people and I think that we may come to a point where in this process that they have found employment elsewhere, et cetera, and I'd like to have a, I think we're pretty strong in that fifth one too, I mean, half in, half of us, half of one of us, four and a half.
Sorry.
Oh, agreed to interview them and I do think that, I, I think that the interview will bring us a wealth of knowledge.
I think we should interview five too, Kelly. I think it's not gonna hurt anything. We might find out something that we didn't know about.
I agree.
And I agree as well. I think, I think the more, because we know, we've seen it happen before when we've done this and somebody does get a job somewhere else, because we know they're interviewing elsewhere, so, just to. And I think the wider group to interview and it really gives us a broader perspective than a, I just, I agree.
And I can do 40-minute interviews instead of 45 and that'll help keep it in the afternoon.
I think that's good.
So it'll be.
Is the objective, or will we make that decision at night if we're going to bring back two people, two finalists, or are we making the final decision based on one 40-minute interview?
So will, during the, on August 14th, you all will have an opportunity to interview the candidates and it will be in public. I will also be doing a staff panel and getting feedback from staff, key department level staff, I'll work closely with Heather to determine who is involved with that. In addition, there will be a reception from 5:00 to 7:00 PM that all staff and community residents can participate in. There's generally short remarks from all the candidates and then an opportunity to follow up with each person one-on-one. I'll be gathering feedback from all participants of that reception as well as the staff panel and I'll be gathering feedback from the commission panel. I'll be providing that information to the commissions and then the following meeting on the 18th, I believe, will come back, I'll be here and that's when you can decide next steps. Those next steps could include to move forward into negotiations with a candidate. It could be that you want to start from scratch or it could be that you want to invite one or more candidates in to interview further. So you always have a few different pathways that you can go down.
I make a motion that we interview the five, top five candidates.
Support.
It would help if I turned on my microphone, sorry. Is there any commissioner discussion or comments on that motion?
I just wanna, yeah, I want to make the comment. Amy, of course, we know the answer of how you're going to proceed. I'm sure people are curious when they're gonna find out who the five are. Can you explain what, what's gonna happen next?
Yes, so tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning, we will call all the candidates and confirm that they are interested. We will then put together the schedule. We will also put together a press release, including bios and the agenda and work with city staff to disseminate that information so that everybody is aware of it, of the opportunity to meet the candidates and to provide input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry to interview five candidates for the city administrator position. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bankey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, it is no time for commissioner comments. Are there any comments from our commissioners? All right, one second. Commissioner Bankey?
Yes, so my comments are, on July 8th, I wrote a letter on behalf of the individual that was mentioned tonight. I received an email requesting for an additional letter. I have written that letter and I've been waiting for additional information since July 22nd with no response to my email. So when that is addressed, I'll be happy to, happy to send that letter off in support of that individual and our community.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'd like to thank Michelle and the city staff for getting information about the Comstock Christmas Tree Riverwalk and the sale of those trees. And I know I'm going to ruffle feathers, feathers here, but I want to reiterate that this is not a memorial park. This is meant for everyone, including businesses and institutions. It's great that, that some families have chosen to decide that they would like a memorial tree in memory of someone. It's lovely, I love walking down there. However, I belong to a couple of different charitable institutions and it's also a joy for us to decorate our trees and I think it would, you know, it didn't start as memorial park, it started as a way for businesses to get some of their word out because they were the initial supporters of this with Mr. Barryman and we certainly don't want to hurt the businesses that have gone and done this for 10 years now. So please, it, just know how it started and why it started and we will only do the 553 trees because of the amount of time and effort that it takes and the amount of electricity it takes. It's exhausting for our city staff to, to put them up and decorate or put the lights on and to take them down. So it's a wonderful, wonderful event, so I just want to make sure people are continuing to be positive about that.
May I get a motion to adjourn? Do you? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.